Comment from the public at this time? Anybody wishing to address the board may do so. No one wants to address the board, we'll have you have a chance at the end of the meeting. Bid results of Type 1 medium ambulants. Madam Clerk.
The following bids were received and opened at 2:10 PM by myself along with the Mayor, Brian Palpe, June Moore, Mike LeBlanc, Bruce Saye, and Walt Larri present. There was only one bid that was received, it was for specialty vehicle sales corp. Bid item number one, which is the base bid, price is $213,857. Bid item number two includes the trade-in of the 1998 American La France Medic Master in the amount of $206,857. There were additional concessions and discount options which I believe have been addressed. Do I make a fifteen long?
I'd like to make the motion at this time to accept the bid number two for $206,857.
Second.
Maybe it'd be worth reading. I was told by the chief, the bid is for $206,000 and if we prepay the chassis, we'll be saving another $100,000.
$100,000.
Another $100,000. There's also, if they have a change order after the contract, they can save almost $5,000. And Mike said that he wanted to purchase some equipment, or they can purchase some equipment and ship it to be installed, which would save us another $2,000. The village has on reserve, and the reserve account has on June 1st, will have $137,000. The Montgomery Homes Rescue Squad Funds, which they have in reserve is $55,000, they're going to apply towards the ambulance. And if we make the full payment on the delivery, we're going to save another $1,500. And then that'll leave the amount of $5,255, which they feel that they might be able to, if they have a little excess left in the prior fund, which may hopefully not cost us any more money. So, great work on the Montgomery Homes Rescue for being able to collect with all the donations and all the work that they've done to collect this money. I think it's a great thing for us to be able to replace an ambulance.
Any other discussion, board? There being no other discussion, all those in favor who vote by usual sign of aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Second bid, my dear.
The next bid was for Contract 2008-02, paving various locations throughout the village. There was a total of three bids that were opened, excuse me, by the village clerk, trustee Moore, Brian Palpe, and other representatives from the three bidders. Stephen Fuller was the first bid. Do you want me to break it down for streets or just the total?
Ah, just give the total.
Okay, they had a total of $258,625. Noel J. Frenell and Sons Incorporated out of Plattsburgh, their total was $198,900. Pike Industries out of Barry, Vermont, had a total of $230,995. There was a fourth bid that, when I went to open the bids the following day for the power cable, there was a bid that had to come in on the 27th. And I was told by our attorney that it was okay to go ahead and open it because it was dated the 27th. And that bid was from Carter's Black Topping, and that bid came in at $225,000. Those were the four bids we see.
Any recommendations, Brian?
I guess we're going to have to look at the budget to see what we can afford.
What streets we can do?
What we can afford to do.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if you can do the whole $198,000 work.
So, you just want to hold off?
Well...
We only got so many days before we...
Right.
We're meeting Wednesday.
Yeah, why don't you table?
Table through Wednesday, I would say.
Fine. I need a motion to table that.
I'll make a motion to table bids until Wednesday, what do you think?
Second.
Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Moore. Scottson? There being no discussion, all those in favor who vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, third bid result, power cable.
Contract 2008-03 for power cable. Those were opened, excuse me, by myself and Brian Palpe was present. The first one was from Dow Electric out of Malone, New York, $106,260. Gotgo Electric, $132,660. Wesco was $129,109.20. And Erby, they had two different ones that they bid on. Okanite was for $125,400. Keiright was for $148,632. These were sent to Kurt Wilson for his review, and I believe Brian has the results of that.
Yes, I had a discussion with Kurt this evening. The Dow Electric came in, the lowest. Tom, with that one, it's made in South Korea, and it does not, usually like stuff has like a UL approval, or this is called RUS specifications. It says it meets RUS specifications, but it hasn't been stamped. But he recommended that we stay away from that cable. And he gave me the lowdown on the other three. And when you look at the bids, it said that it's subject to price escalation. What that means is the price of copper per day, whatever ends up at the market. That's why it's hard to get a firm quote. So he broke it down into a formula for me, which is going to send us a full report tomorrow on how he broke it down, because we talked over the phone tonight, and of course he didn't have time to do it. But Gotgo Electric was $132,660. And that was, it's called a COMEX number that they use, it's the price of the copper that day, and if these people bid and they put in a low number for copper of this week, next week it might be higher. So the number that Gotgo uses is the higher number. And they went with, their price was $132,660. Wesco, they made a bid for $129,109.20. But using that figure of the COMEX number, their bid is $138,941. That would be the price escalation.
That would be the highest.
So it would be higher than Gotgo. Now, Erby, their bid was $125,004. On the Okanite cable, it would be $134,862, the formula of the COMEX number of the escalation, of the copper price. And if you use the Keiright cable, that comes in $149,862.
What's the difference between them two?
Okanite and Keiright, Keiright is about the best cable on the market. And Kurt uses all their specifications to calculate any of these figures for longevity, amperage, like most of this cable that we have is rated for 570 amps. That's what this cable were, and this one from Dow Electric from South Korea can only hold 470 amps. So there's fluctuations in the specifications. They meet the specs, but they don't in a way.
That kind of low end.
I mean, how are you going to test it? Are you going to push the cable for the max?
I don't think so.
What if you do it and it doesn't?
Yeah. You're stuck with it.
His recommendation is to go with the Gotgo Electric. Would be a firm price of $132,660. And if the copper price of the market of the week of delivery is less, it would be less that they'll charge us.
This would be the most, when they deliver, this would be the most funded bid when they deliver.
Right. Because this is the highest that he's ever seen the market, and that's the price he give us.
It could be lower in time.
It could be lower at the time. But if something happens with the copper price, it could be, but see, you're only going four to six weeks.
That's good.
The other ones are 14, or 12 to 14 weeks. So the copper price could go through the roof, you don't know.
They went up again today, so for gold and copper.
When you're buying copper, it's tough to bid.
And it's the week of delivery that they're charging.
Yes, yes. I don't like buying cable like that, but that's the way it is.
Longer we wait, the more it's going to be.
See, silly to even have a bidding process.
That's what, you know, I kind of had a discussion with these salespeople, and you know, and they put in there, I said, can you give us a firm price? Nope, subject to price escalation. That's what they checked on at all the bids. And like they said, how do we know what the price of copper is that week? We have to pass it on. Or else it's going to block our profit. Apparently, on cable, when they bid these things out, they're only making a 5% markup. I don't believe it, but that's what they're saying.
They don't really handle it anyways, right?
No, they're just passing it through, that's all they are.
Just touch it. Put their name on the invoice.
Their name's on the invoice. It comes right from the factory. But he's willing to do a whole write-up that he'll send us tomorrow on exactly what I told you tonight through the recommendations.
Bottom line, as far as I'm concerned, we award a bid because we ain't going to pay for it anyway, Wyeth's going to pay for this.
Yeah.
So...
For Gotgo Electric, with that price that you gave us, is the closest price that we can come to, to being firm.
So then I'll make that motion tonight, then we go out. We accept the bid of Gotgo Electric for $132,660.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burks. Is there any other discussion?
I have a question. I didn't compare this, Brian, to what that estimate was that we had, when we were dealing with Wyeth on this.
It's high.
This is high?
Um, actually, I have it right here. On the cable?
Yeah.
At the time, Kirk put in $68,000.
Double.
I think on the new bill that I've sent, that the bill had sent in...
I don't think we brought up that much.
It was $119,000, I think, or maybe $126,000.
Just for the cable we had on?
Yeah. Oh, here it is. $119,340. That's what the bill was, that we sent them. That was the price of copper, you know, back then, and I mean, I thought we brought it up from a lot, from $68,000 to $119,000. And that's what they got booked for.
Yep.
But that's why we asked for that contingency fund of $21,600. That's the reason. Because you don't know how the copper prices work in the cable.
You're not right without it.
Well, we're planning to pass this cost on to Wyeth for the chemde development.
It could be cheaper when it comes in by a couple of costs.
It might be, but I wouldn't hold it at that.
Okay, we've got to think positive. I know, but let's be realistic. You know, we're in print, inflation and everything, so.
Do you think we have to wait till we get Kurt's recommendation in writing prior to vote, you know, accepting this bid? Just as a matter of course, inasmuch as it's...
Well, we can also hold it out on Wednesday, then if we want to do so next day.
I don't think it makes any difference at this point.
I don't think it does either. He's going to go do a bunch of work, that we already know what we've got to do, we've got to just...
He already did all the work today, and we've been discussing this back and forth today, and he didn't have time to type it up. He even offered, if you wanted to call him, he's home tonight, if you want to put him on speakerphone, and he can walk you through it, exactly what he just told you. But he's willing to put it in writing and send it to us tomorrow. So we have it for our records.
I think, yeah.
Oh, definitely, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, sooner rather than later.
Probably Wyeth would want it too.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, when we send them the bill, they're going to want that.
Yep.
In fact, they did send the bill. We just have to send them what it costs now, and they'll send us a check for that, as soon as it comes in.
Yes.
Same with the switchgear stuff.
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to go to Gotgo, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Carol, you'll see that we all did a copy of that right when it came in, okay.
Okay, minutes of the previous meeting of February 19th. You all have copies of it. Is there any additions or deletions? If not, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of February 19th.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, motion made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burks. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor who vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried, bills. You all have copies of the bills, any additions?
We have two additions tonight. One is the lulls in the amount of $83.89. That is for an electric blower and shower curtain rods here for the Civic Center. And the other one is Verizon Wireless, it's 4875, it's the monthly bill of the Department of the Police Department.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills tonight as amended.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor who vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried, court projects.
First item I have is from the Plattsburgh Chamber of Conference. Welcome Acromax Pharmaceuticals. It's the first opportunity to meet and hear from the founder and CEO of Acromax Pharmaceuticals regarding their exciting new venture in Rosas Point. The program will feature a presentation on their venture and its future plans, followed by a question and answer period. This is going to be held Thursday, March 13th, from 7:30 till 9 o'clock AM at the Holiday Inn in Plattsburgh. Registration is $16 for members.
Anybody from the board want to go?
I'd love to go, but I can't.
I'll go. I'm going. We need to have somebody present there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, do you make reservations for two of us?
I'll make a motion to allow two of you to go.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor who vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The next item I have is from Sandra Kelly, to whom it may concern, this came in certified by the way. We ask permission when the village abroad is sponsored to renew the liquor license permit for old times cafe. That's just an acknowledgement that was sent us. The next letter I have came to Jeffrey Moore, the village of Champlain, here Mayor Rivers. The Board of Trustees, we'd like to sincerely thank you for the help you and your staff provided the village during the water emergency that occurred on February 12, 2008. Thanks to your help, the situation was rectified quickly, helping to stop any further contamination that could have occurred. The response by all agencies involved with this serious program was outstanding. Because of the well-organized efforts by everyone, the residents were spared from any water contamination in their homes and businesses. Once again, we appreciate your rapid response and concerted efforts to help the village in its time of need. With all our appreciation, Jeffrey Moore, Mayor.
Very nice.
I do have one more item that we received. It was from the New York State Commission on Property Tax Relief. It says, "Dear elected official, as you know, I was honored to be appointed by Governor Stitler to chair the New York State Commission on Property Tax Relief. In the governor's executive order creating the commission, he charges with examining the root causes of New York's property tax burden, identifying ways to make the state's property tax system fair, and developing a fair and effective school property tax cap to hold the line on property tax growth. I am writing today to invite you to participate in work on, in the work of the commission. The commission has already conducted two meetings, the first in New York City on January 30th, and the second in Albany on February 12th. For your information below are the dates and locations of the upcoming commission meeting, subject to change. The closest one to us is in Albany on April 23rd, it's a Wednesday. There are multiple ways in which you or your constituents, excuse me, can get involved. You may let me know if you would like to testify, you may submit your testimony, or you may attend one of our meetings." That's from Thomas Rosie, chairman.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Carol. Anybody interested in going to Property Tax Relief? We are passing a resolution tonight on that. Yeah, Tom? Report of the mayor and the board of trustees. First thing on the agenda, and I think you'll have a copy of it plenty, is the 2008 Main Street Economic Development Conference, held in Hyde Park, New York, on the 24th of April. Is anybody interested in going? I talked to Melissa today, she's attended this, and last year she actually put out a presentation at this. She said, you know, it would behoove the village to send somebody. But I'm not sure, I'd like to, when is the time?
April 23rd for the registration form.
Okay, we can hold off on this. We'll hold off on the election. Okay, there's a resolution on this New York State Property Tax Protection Act. Okay, you want to read that whole thing?
Sure. Whereas the tremendously high property tax burden on New York families and businesses is the number one issue based in our community today, and the sheer cost of living in New York has forced many residents and businesses to leave, thus slowing the economic engine of the state. And whereas young people are finding it difficult to purchase homes, seniors are struggling to maintain their homes, and businesses are facing immense challenges to create and retain jobs. And whereas New Yorkers face the highest property taxes in the nation, and when measured as percentage of home value, nine of the top 10 property tax rates in the entire country belong to counties in New York. And the state must act now to thwart the detrimental effects that high property taxes are having on local governments. And whereas Assembly Minority Conference members have introduced the New York State Property Taxpayers Protection Act, Assembly Bill 8775-Dajay, which puts forth new and innovative ideas for property tax reform that limit the amount school districts can raise annually through local tax levies to 4% of the rate of inflation, whichever is less. In addition, the act would relieve municipalities and school districts of unfunded mandates, reduce county Medicaid costs, strengthen financial accountability over school tax dollars, promote local government efficiency, and encourage local option insurance pooling. And whereas New York State Property Taxpayers Protection Act will help fix New York's broken property tax system, providing homeowners, businesses, and municipalities significant and lasting relief from the crushing burden of skyrocketing property taxes. And now therefore be it resolved that this legislative body calls in its deliberations to acknowledge New York State's property tax crisis, and urge the immediate passage and chaptering of the New York State Property Taxpayers Protection Act, which will help local governments reinvigorate New York's economy by providing incentives for people and businesses to move and stay here. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution suitably engrossed be transmitted to the governor of the state of New York, temporary president of the New York State Senate, the Speaker of the New York State Assembly, and to each member of the New York State Legislature.
I'll flip that form of a motion.
Second.
Moved by myself and seconded by trustee Jefferson. Roll call, roll, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Burks.
Aye.
And the mayor will sign. I'm just going to make a quick report on the winter legislative meeting of NITOM, held February 24th through 26th in Albany. Very interesting this year. Every year I have gone to this, set this, and I've heard the same speech from the Speaker and from the head of the Senate. This year was different. They actually talked the work together. First time in 14 years that I have heard this. And I think everybody in that audience was mixed. You could have heard a pin drop, because we expected the same thing. We had a, just a quick update on the upstairs chair, the Empire State, and all the corporation. They are going to have an aggressive campaign to go after the people that are not fulfilling their promises. Like such and such company is getting tax breaks, but they said they were going to have 200 employees, and they only got 150, so they're going after them and saying, hey, you're not going to get this. You promised when you got the money, your tax break, this. So that was received well. Commission on Local Government, you heard some of it. Property tax relief is one of the greatest things. The comptroller got a chewing, like you wouldn't believe, a mayor from Long Island, and he stood there and took it for about five minutes. But he got a chewing, because they, there's 155, I want to say, assessing, the villagers that do their own assessing. And what they're saying is the comptroller said, do away with that, go to county assessing. And he actually said, if you want to look at a county that's doing it right, look at Flent County. They're doing it right. And this mayor got up and he says, I have a population of 946 people, and every one of them is a multimillionaire, and you're going to tell them what to do? You've got another thing coming, Mr. Comptroller. Oh, we were bad. Anyway. Senator Bruno, again, Senator, and then Assemblyman Silverus. And then Environmental Conservation, the Environmental Conservation is going to be passing, or hoping to get legislation through this year to ban all open burning in the state. Whether or not that passes is going to be questionable. And of course, then we had a Commission on Property Tax Relief, which we ordered, read. Couple of these I couldn't attend because they're at the same time. Insurance Cost, the New York Municipal Insurance, which we had, and PERMA, which we had, got up and made their big pitch as usual. And then we had a reception on Monday night, and the governor was the guest speaker, and he actually called me to the podium. Says, the mayor of Ross's Point here, and I was not too far away, pull over here. He says, your people are to be commended. He says, you want to talk about a success story of people willing to put something together and work hard to get something done? He said, they saved 800 jobs up there, and he says, it's amazing. And he said, they are to be commended. So I felt pretty good. I was the limelight at the reception. And that was the end of the conference for me, because I left that night. I left right after the reception. They predicted a pretty bad snowstorm the next day, and I want to get home. It was a good conference this year. I was pleased. Okay. I think in your package, you all got this invitation for application for Transport and Transportation Enhancement Program. And if you look down at one of the bullets, it says, rehabilitation and operation of historic transportation building structures or facilities, including historic railroad facilities and cadals. I've got Melissa working on this. There's going to be a workshop in, in Plattsburgh Town Office on April 9th. I think that we should attend that. Probably Melissa, and if I'm still in office myself, on the 9th of April. I'm sure trying to get money for that railroad station. I don't think we need a motion to attend that, it's right there in Plattsburgh, it's just a date thing. Okay, I've received an invitation and asked permission to go, it's no cost, to the Battle of Plattsburgh Association, invite, fortunately invite you to the formal opening of the food exhibit. It's Friday, March 14th at 4:00 PM. It's Friday, March 14th at 4:00 P.M. Just for, there was a personal invitation I got from that. And with that, I have a resolution for budget modification. It's always had all these figures. I don't have the resolution. Move for it, Arsene.
Okay, this is to put the budget back in place here. Under the general fund appropriations, we are going to increase the appropriations 27,563. We're going to increase our estimated revenues at 7,777, and decrease our appropriated fund balance at 35,340. The water fund, apparently I forgot to change my numbers here. I'm talking about the title.
You're talking about the what?
I'm talking about the title. Water fund is number three. It's actually number two, actually.
Oh, okay.
Okay, under the water fund, we are going to decrease our appropriations 52,866 and increase our appropriated fund balance 52,166. Sewer fund, we're going to decrease our appropriations $2,000 and decrease the appropriated fund balance by $2,000. Under the library fund, we are going to increase the appropriated fund balance by 1,560, increase appropriations 1,560. With the community development capital projects, we are going to increase our estimated revenues at 271,650, increase appropriated fund balance 373,575, and increase appropriations 645,245.
Need a motion to pass this resolution.
Make a motion to pass the budget modification resolution.
Second.
Moved by trustee Penfield and seconded by trustee Moore. Any other discussion?
I have a question, though. Why do we do this now, Arsene? How do you, because we for a hundred time have these. What trips them or triggers them?
Well, we're working on the budgets. I'm trying to figure out what the surplus is.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure. Because we get them from, and I just was curious. Okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Burks.
Aye.
And the mayor will sign. And that's it for me. Trustee Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor Rivers. Tonight we have a discussion of HK border substation transformer repair, rewind or rebuild analysis. And I'll turn the microphone over to Ryan Kokiya.
Did everybody get a packet? Kurt Wilson. Basically, we have three options with the HK border, the one that we sent down to TNR on the back page, it breaks it right down, where option one is to just pretty much clean up the transformer and put it back in service without any major rewinding of it. That was 120,920. If you completely rewind the core and the coils of the transformer to make it brand new, it comes in, and that's at the size that it is now, it's a 7500 size. It comes in at 208,000. Option three is to completely rewind the core and the coils and raise it up to a size 10,000 at 237,000. When we went out to bid last year for the power transformer, the bid that we were looking at was Virginia Transformer for a size 10,000 was 608,000. We can get this one completely rebuilt at a size 10 for 237,000. It gives us 33% more capacity in our substation, and for the money, it's a good price. And that's mine and Kurt Wilson's recommendation.
Leaves us the option if we need more power down the road, we've got enough time to get it built. It's pretty, it's pretty easy, just when he explained it to us the other day.
Yeah, the whole report, I mean, if you're reading the report, he pretty much outlines everything that, I mean, the transformer would be like brand new.
30 weeks.
Yes, it's a 30-week turnaround on this. So we're looking to get it back in service come October, and we're going to put it in a different position than where it was. It's going to be in a more user-friendly position for us. It's going to be in the center position of our substation so it can assist the two smaller transformers if we have a problem. We'll be able to switch our load a lot easier. That's why we wanted to go with a free size of the 10,000. Right now you have three small transformers of 7500s. Right now we're running the village on the Waka Shaw, the new one that we bought five years ago. And too small, the, we have the money in the electric fund. Yes, I talked to Arsene today, and we can pretty much afford it. Right now, yes. Without going out to bond, we have the money in the electric fund to care of this problem. As you could see on the, on the last page, there's some additional, whatever we do in our substation, like our new Waka Shaw that we put in there, we put this protection on it. It's a new switchgear type protection. It's like a big circuit breaker. So if there's any faults, it's going to trip out. The old style transformers have these big linkage fuses that if you have a problem on one fuse, it might pop out, and the other two could stay in, it could burn up the transformer. That's why for the additional, that's why you see on this sheet, plus 60,000 for protection. We have to put a whole brand new switchgear in front of it. Eventually, all three transformers will have to be done. But since this is our newest transformer going back online, we would like to put the new protection in front of it. And that would be a budgeted item for 2008, 2009.
The 60,000?
Yeah. Total cost is like 322,000?
Yeah.
300, come out.
Yeah, that'd be the total. 312,000 to put a new, I mean, either way, if you bought a new transformer, you still have to buy the switchgear in front of it.
60,000 going next.
Low voltage side, it's just some additional insulators on the low voltage side because we're increasing the size of the transformer so much, we need to boost up the size of the insulators.
And I think it's very important that we have enough power for our biggest customer. Everything's status quo up there, the business is going to stay, they might even expand. So this gives us the potential to go with more power.
So. Right now, we're in good shape on, because we have the Waka Shaw online, and we can run the whole village on the Waka Shaw, that's our biggest transformer, and one of the small GEs. It's just for future development, I mean, you lose your capacity in the summertime because of the heat temperature of the transformers, you lose your value of your transformers. You've got to, the cooler they stay, the more they can put out. So they think, you know, you think that most of our load is in the summertime, we watch, or in the wintertime, we watch these transformers in the summertime more than we watch them in the wintertime. And we do our station checks every Monday morning, but in the summertime on really hot days, we'll go up, make sure the fans are on, keeping these things cool. It's like an investment that we want to take care of.
All right. So I'm going to make the motion tonight that we take the third option. It'll be 237 to totally rebuild and upgrade the transformer, and the 60,000 protection will go into the budget here 2008, 2009. I'll put that forward with motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There be no discussion, all of the favors, vote by your, got by?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And that's all I have to report today.
Trustee Penfield.
First item that I have is to request an executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Second.
Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Burks.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Bad turn there, George.
Oh.
Why, are you forgetting him already?
Yep. Sorry.
You're fading away.
Well, you haven't even done yet.
You're fading away.
And the mayor will sign.
Okay, and then on the supplemental agenda, I have one item. I met with Toni Quain last week to do the annual justice court record audit, and as usual, she was well-prepared and had everything in order, and everything is just done. So Toni just continues to do a great job keeping track of things. She certainly seems to have a handle on some of the, the new items that she has to deal with, and it seems like things are running very smoothly. So for the record, I can give an overall evaluation that the records of Justice LaBouny and Justice Favreau have been reviewed and appear to be satisfactory, and I am required to give a copy of the checklist to the village clerk, and so I'll give this to Carol after the meeting tonight, and it'll be finished for another year.
Tell us the status of Judge Favreau.
I don't know. I don't know.
Well, I know he was okay. He was at a funeral the other day.
He was having.
He had open heart surgery last month. I was there before he went in. I spoke to him before he went in for the operation, because my wife and I were getting some tests on him. Talked to the neighbor, Patrick, who's right next door. After the operation, he came through successfully, and we were expecting him home. That was the last that I heard I didn't.
He's had, for the next six weeks, he's going to be out of commission at least.
For sure.
Yeah. So we don't have a backup judge in the village, and Judge LaBouny has taken over the, his cases and stuff, so just want to let everybody know that, in case there's a big run on cases and stuff. We're one George down.
Well, but certainly wish him well if he realizes.
He's doing fine.
Is that it, trustee Penfield?
That is it.
Thank you very much.
I do have one other quick question, though. Have you heard any more George about the Foxworth Trading Agreement?
No, other than that it's in the process. I talked to Scott, Scott from Liant.
Yep.
And he is going to review it. Their attorneys are reviewing it.
Okay.
Our attorneys are reviewing it.
Okay.
So it's working. Whatever.
Sounds good. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, trustee Penfield. Trustee Moore.
I have a question.
Well, thank you, sir. Trustee Burks.
I have a question for Arsene. I was approached by Andy, who are president of library work. Wondering if we could get some slight overtime monies for the library personnel to get the automation process completed, because the girls are doing it now when they're working, but there's not enough time, and it's not going to be a lot of money. I just wonder, is there somewhere in the budget that we can give them?
Well, which one are you talking?
I don't, I can talk to Andy tomorrow, but it's not going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars, just maybe a couple hundred dollars, just for overtime to get it completed and out of the way.
We need to talk in overtime, you're talking straight salary, not talking.
Right, right, straight salary, just for extra hours.
Extra hours.
For the.
Automation?
Automation. Maybe I can get Andy to give you a call tomorrow to see just about how much time they would
That it, John?
And I have a, an announcement for the public information here to be held on March the 10th at 7:00 P.M. here in the Hallstead Hall. It's for the purposes of the meeting is an update on the revitalization projects. I think that all interested parties should be attending. If anybody would like to thank Melissa for all her work in the revitalization and the group that did it, or if they have any concerns or criticisms, I think it's a time to show up, time to make an announcement, either pro or against. So that would be a good time to come forward. I think everybody will like what has been going on, and hopefully the residents and the village would be happy to see downtown. It looks a lot better, so, but this will be a chance for people to voice their opinion.
Is that a paper?
Yes. Is there anything else?
That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Burks. Carol?
I have a question.
Arsene?
Just wanted to, budget meeting Wednesday.
Yep.
4:00, right?
Brian? Yes, just an update on Delaware Street and Ryan Avenue. Most of the high voltage cable has been terminated through the winter. He's finishing up this week on Ryan Avenue. You're going to see us start, the weather's going to break here, we're going to start cutting over some houses on Furl and White. We're trying to get the job finished up, so when good weather comes, we can work in our substation. Street Department, they've been just doing the maintenance. Of course, Johnny Bernard is still out, our mechanic, and Tim Bennett is doing an excellent job trying to fill his shoes, and I think he's doing very well, how he's doing. Other than that, they've been just maintaining the streets, the snow and the ice, and we went through a lot of sand and a lot of salt this year. So that's another budget item that we can look at on Wednesday. We're looking for an increase for next year, because we're pretty much using up our surplus that we usually have leftover, and we mix it with our sand that we have out back to restock our pile, but we have nothing to mix with the sand, so everything is going to have to be done next fall. But other than that, I'm just out measuring up projects, and you'll see me about with the wheel, measuring sidewalks, and planning projects for the summer.
So we're out of salt right now, or are we going to be out of salt?
No, we have probably, we get 300 ton a year. We probably have about 80 ton left, and we're trying to hold off on it, we're trying to use the sand, use the salt just on the sidewalks, because it seems to work better than the sand driving right up. But the sun's getting warmer. You can tell the big difference in the weather already, but we are in good shape. I mean, we still have a third of our barn left with sand.
All the days are getting longer, so.
Brian, I got, I got a question. We're planning on repaving Montgomery Street.
Yeah.
And I've noticed, I've always noticed because I live there, and a lot of people living back on the street are concerned about the speed, especially with people coming, using that as a crossover coming, you know, from the bridge, and people using that as shortcut. We're going to have a sidewalk on the east side of Montgomery, and there's not really going to be any protection for the people walking on it, it's not, there's no plans for a guide rail or anything. Is there any, or maybe I should ask this and probably discuss it with the board also, speed tables or a stop sign at the end of Rose Avenue like there was before, to get people to actually stop? And then the addition of a speed table, and I've discussed this before, not just the speed bump, but a speed table where people would actually travel on for 20 or 30 feet. If, I don't know how expensive that would be, you know, it's because we only have money for the actual, you know, top coaming or the tarmac or the blacktop that's going on there. Is there any way that we can try to estimate what a couple of speed tables would cost?
I can call tomorrow, look on the internet and see what they have.
Maybe.
This would be just for the summer use? You would take them out during the plowing season?
Yeah, you can't plow.
I was going to say. I think you, you probably could plow, but I doubt, it'd probably be more like a summer thing, but I don't know if that's feasible to put something that's mobile, speed tables, that you can take in and out, I don't know.
Like a speed bump or a whole cable?
Whole cable. Speed bump, you get, you know, that can damage barriers, but then people don't really slow down. Some, some kind of device to slow traffic down, because, you know, I mean, there's going to be a lot of kids out there with the, with the new pier and with the new sidewalk, the beach is getting developed, that whole area at the north side, you know, people are going to be, kids are going to be.
We work down there, and the traffic is terrible. I mean, they fly down through there.
And I know we've had the policemen down there, and they've been giving tickets out, but, you know, it can be anytime, day and night, and it's, you know, and the trash is going to be, it's not going to be a good thing. We'd like to get people that are. We'd like to get people that are not to use that unless they really wanna go down that street, stop at the marinas or whatever.
What about an additional stop sign? Like, I don't remember, maybe John can tell us too, how effective the, the stop was at the end of Rose Avenue, John, how do you...
Well, it was alright, but it really wasn't a good place for it, because, you know, usually stop signs are right across from one another, and if you put one, you know, had to go quite a ways south, and it was, it was at least 100 feet between the two stop signs, so it didn't work out very well. But I was thinking, if you put a stop sign at, like the boat launch area...
I was thinking the same thing. You have an additional stop sign, so they're not...
That would be about halfway on the street.
Can you legally do that?
We're not sure we can legally do that, because there's no, there's no intersection...
There's no intersection there.
Well, but could we check?
Well, I think we, it's worth while checking into it.
They just were kinda like rolling through that stop sign, you know, Johnny?
You know, if they rolled through it...
Yeah, but better than...
Better than speeding.
Going 40 miles an hour, I mean, they're really fast.
I was thinking too that...
Oh, no.
There will be some crosswalks, more than likely as well, and maybe some of those pedestrian crossings in the middle of the road, you know?
Maybe, maybe that's a point that we can use, crosswalks in that area.
That's what I was thinking, because I was thinking exactly the same thing, right here in the boat launch. Because even if you put the stop signs at the end of Rose Avenue, if you have traffic coming from Vermont, they're just gonna be, by the time they get to your house, they're gonna have accelerated again. But if you put an additional stop sign, I don't know.
Well, the reason, the reason I was against them is because, you know, if the police are there to enforce people running the stop sign, it's a real good way to kill the, you know, the lounge business.
Yeah.
John, why don't you check for the night, tomorrow, and have them check at the state? That'd be a...
It'd be a good, we gotta, we have to do something, like even if we make crosswalks and put cones like repeated or with the boat launches, you know, Rico someplace, because that's, that, that again is halfway, you know, the, the distance is cutting...
And you put, you know, they have those very thin pedestrian crossings, not the barrels, but the thin ones that are actually in the road, at least it's something...
I got Cabbage Street, they have a Cabbage Street.
Yes, yes. And you see them in small towns where they have tourist areas, and it does, I think it does serve to at least slow the traffic down a little, so, yeah.
Alright.
Alright, that it?
Thank you.
Anybody come to follow it, to trust the board, may do something right now. You have your chance. Nobody wish to? They need an adjournment for...
Motion for recess.
Recession. Second. And Moore and Jefferson, we're in recess.
Years of...
It should be quick. I hope. Just go to shut that camera off, John.
You've got a meeting tonight?
Hard work. Just put the button on the side.